All right, good evening. It's 5:30, time to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone that is in attendance tonight. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any modifications to it?
I would like to remove item F and J from the consent agenda and have them in items for commission action.
Commissioner Hayes?
I have no other adjustments.
All right. So I'm going to entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as modified in consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item two, appointments. On the electrical board, we have two expired terms. One is eligible for reappointment. Applications are due by noon on May 21st of 2021. So if you are considering and you have some expertise as related to serving on the electrical board, now's your chance to get an application in. And those are due by noon on May 21st. Item B, the Independence Historical Preservation and Research Commission. We have two resignations. Applications for those are due by noon on May 21st, 2021. So those of you out there that maybe you have not served on a board, are new to the area, and would like to step forward and be part of this, I encourage you to submit an application so we could consider you as an appointment to the Independence Historical Preservation and Research Commission. I'm going to skip over C, and I'm going to cover that last. Item D, the Library Board of Trustees. There are two terms expired. One is eligible for reappointment. Applications are due by noon on May 21st of 2021. So here again, anyone that would be interested in serving, please fill out an application and turn it in prior to the due date so we can consider you for an appointment. And on item E, the Tree Board, there are three terms that expire on June 1st of 2021. One is eligible for reappointment. Applications are due by noon on May 21st, 2021. So I'm encouraging all those that have any interest, fill out an application so you can be considered to serve on these boards. Moving back to item C, the Land Bank Board of Trustees. This was a new board. The Land Bank Board is a new board that was established by the commission, and we ended up with nine applications that were received. And out of those, I have seven new members that I would like to appoint. And I'm going to go by this, one by one, starting with the appointee and the length of term that they will serve. So my first one that I would like to move to serve on this committee would be Laura Laurie Westalowski. And that will be to a three-year term. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. My second appointee will be Architect John Heckman, and he will also serve a three-year term. And do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. My third applicant to serve a three-year term will be Gary Hogsett, Engineering. And do I have a second?
Second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. My next two appointees that will each serve a two-year term will be Shelley Hudson. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 My next appointment will be Mary Jo Wallace, which will be a two-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. And my last two appointees for a one-year term will be Tim Emmert. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. And Lisa Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Welcome aboard. We're looking forward to working with you on this new board, and it will be a learning process for all involved. But we're excited to see where this takes us and how we can incorporate it and make the city of Independence an even better community. So thank you to all who applied, and if you didn't get selected this time, there are other boards available, so don't give up. But I appreciate you filling out an application. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, moving on to consent agenda. We've had a chance to look at the consent agenda, and we are moving items F and J to items for commission action. So knowing that, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, item five, items for commission action. Promise not to be asleep at the wheel today. Let's move on to item F, and that item is considering authorizing upgrading streetlights on North Penn between Oak and Mulberry. And this is something that I have brought to the city manager and staff. That area, the majority of those streetlights are on the east side of the cemetery wall. And the area that I've surveyed, it basically, I'm looking to upgrade the lighting there to highlight the commercial area when people are coming into town, especially during the winter months when it's dark early. The lighting would increase, would be beneficial as far as security because it would increase the lighting along that street. It would also provide a better safety factor for people that would be coming out of that cemetery area. There are openings that people cross the highway on, and we are able to do that with an upgrade with, I believe it's $59 and change per month for the upgrade on the lighting, which Westar will have to order that amount of lights, but they would be able to accomplish this within a one to two day timeframe. But I think it would highlight that part of the town. I look at West Main when you come in, in the evening. You know, a lot of those trees have been removed, and they've been trimmed back. Those lights are bright, and it really lights up that area for people that are coming in. And it really highlights that particular area of town. The lights that I identified are basically going to provide additional lighting for commercial entities that are along that strip of North Penn, with the last light being at the corner of Mulberry. So there won't be any additional enhanced lighting north of that point. But I think it will enhance that particular area of town, and for people that are coming in, will kind of highlight what we have. And the cost, to me, is minimal, and that was my purpose of bringing this to the city manager and for consideration by my fellow commissioners on this.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that this upgrade also is consistent with the level of lighting that is in the downtown, in the north of the downtown area. So it's more consistent with the commercial area that we already support with this level of lighting.
Yes, that is correct. And if I understood the document right, there's actually, we're upgrading, there's two different sets of lumens on the existing lights now, and that those are both going to be upgraded. So yes, I think it's a good idea, and it does. It'll show off that particular part of town. And Commissioner Koflic, your ideas or concerns?
Well, I was wondering, you know, what our standard was previously to determine what the lumen level of the lights were set there, instead of just, you know, identifying it's dark, and we want to make it brighter. I looked at coming into East Main Street, and the lighting level is similar. I understand what you're talking about in the business district, but going clear to Mulberry, you get into residential, the lights from Oak to Willow, all of those are 4,834 lumens. They're the lower level. There is a couple, 6,400 lumen at the Car Wash and at First Street. One thing different, as you mentioned, all these are on the east side of the street, coming into the east side on Main. At every intersection, there is a streetlight on each side street on the corner. So it accents the corner, you can see better when you're making a turn off of Main or coming on to Main Street. One of the problems I notice on North Penn Avenue is when you're going north to turn on to a side street, that area isn't illuminated, and it's difficult to see the corner and the intersection. So, you know, without a standard that we've got on to determining what lighting level we have, if we're going to look at addressing issues, then maybe it's not just one set of fixtures, but look at the different needs and see if we are addressing all the entrances. I can see the commercial area from Oak to Willow having the, I think we're looking at going from 4,834 lumens to 9,625, almost doubling the output. And that is a heavier concentration of business. But to go clear out to Mulberry, I don't see a need to extend, just in general practice, of changing out the lights there. It would be beneficial to add a light fixture on the west side at the intersection to aid in navigating the corner. But, you know, I think if we're going to look at, I guess basically if we're going to look at addressing a lighting issue, why don't we look at the city to see what other areas? One thing that was noted in a response from Evergy, sometimes around schools, alleys, that those are increased lighting levels to provide security. One area, we have a parking lot on Penn Avenue between Maple and Main Street that is concealed back in between the buildings, and it's extremely dark in there. So instead of just addressing one path, maybe it's time that we really evaluate our street lighting on the primary streets and see what should be done citywide, and then come up with a replacement plan. Also look at areas around the schools with activities at night. Is there areas that are lacking? Have we got, in the downtown area, you know, from the parking lots, adequate illumination to provide security there? So instead of, basically, like I said, instead of just addressing one area, what I would recommend is we look at a plan, what we want to accomplish, and evaluate the primary streets, coming and going in town, circulating through town, and then also high-risk areas.
To comment on that, I did look at East Main, but there are so many trees that are involved in that, even going to a higher-lumens light, you're still going to have blockage because of the trees are overgrown. And a lot of them are basically shielding the light now, and that was my concern. There would be other things that would need to be involved in order to illuminate that particular area. The houses that are along North Penn, I think there's only five houses, and some of those have trees in the front yard, which I think would block the illumination for that point because they are bright, but I don't look for them to be a potential problem in those particular neighborhoods. As far as the one on Maple, or Mulberry, if that one would be eliminated, I wouldn't have a problem with that because I didn't initially, I don't believe I initially included that in the plan. But we do have other areas where lighting could be addressed. And with Evergy, we can add lights where we think we need, we can remove lights where we don't think we need lights anymore, if it's highlighting an area where there's nothing there anymore. So we have the ability to do that as long as we are willing to pay whatever additional cost there is to do what we intend to do. But, you know, if there's a fair number of lights involved, it's going to be something that's going to be done over phases because Westar also, there's a timeline on when those particular LED lights are available. So no matter how we proceed on this, there's always going, there'll be a timeline as far as when these can be addressed based on the availability of lights and the availability of Evergy's manpower to complete the process. So I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I understand there are other areas that we probably need to maybe do an inventory and see where maybe a higher-lumens light would work better than what we are using now, and maybe that's something that we need to consider throughout the city. And it could be part of this plan as far as the upgrade. So that way we could get a price on how many lights we're looking at upgrading, what the cost is going to be, and then what the timeline would be, whether it's 50 or 60 lights, or 100 lights, whatever it turns out to be. Determine what the additional monthly cost will be added to our lighting contract, and then a timeline as to the length of time as far as procuring the lights, and then the availability of manpower to make the change out. So...
On East Main, you're not going to accomplish anything by changing the lights out. There's no need to have it brighter. You're traveling at night, you've got headlights. It's bright enough the way it is. To double the lumen output in that area is not accomplishing anything. With the farther area north you go, you're not going to gain, other than making the cemetery brighter, the LEDs don't have the spread that the old sodium vapor did. So, you know, to double the lumen output, we're not accomplishing, other than just making that area bright, it's not going to increase safety or visibility since they're on the east side, not accomplishing a functional purpose for, particularly in the residential that area farther, farther north, there's just a lot of open land.
I'm pretty sure that I read in the documentation that this is all zoned commercial, even though that there are residences that are still there. Is it zoned commercial to Mulberry, or is it, does the commercial zoning end prior to Mulberry?
Let me check that for you, but I think that's correct.
It was residential where Dollar General was going in, is that correct?
Yeah, but that was further north of Mulberry.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that last light, if they would consider the corner of Mulberry, that would be the Self-Security Administration building. But I don't believe I had included that originally in the proposal because of, there's a residence that faces that right through the corner. I was more concerned with everything south at that point to Oak Street.
Shelter insurance, there's just a little bit right there, it's only residential area. From Willow South is all business.
Yeah, but C2 zoning stops at Mulberry, so everything north of Mulberry, it's residential and south is commercial.
Okay. So like, I think Mayor Yoususi pointed out, there are a number of entrances to commercial properties along that which have traffic going in and out and illuminating the roadway at that point. I don't know about the spread of the lumens. So that, I guess, is my question, is that if the spread of the additional lumens does not cascade onto the intersection across the street, or it doesn't illuminate maybe the walking, the pedestrian traffic that would be on the opposite side of the street, maybe that is the, maybe a more important question to answer at this point. Where do those lights aim their, the increased lighting? Is it aimed at just the east lanes of Pennsylvania Avenue, or is it aimed in such a way that it spreads to the opposite side of the street? Do we have that answer this evening?
I don't have that answer.
I don't have that answer either. If I was taking a guess, I would say it would illuminate the two lanes on the east side. It would be more visibility at that point.
Well, presumably immediately below the street lamp is the brightest, and then as it goes out from there, it would be dimmer. How far away does it become inconsequential that we've increased the intensity of the light?
That I don't know. So at this point, then, let me bring this up to you, to my fellow commissioners. What if we go through and table this for now? We go through and we do an inventory of where we need to increase lighting throughout the area of town, and identify those points, and then get that inventory and get that to Evergy so we can determine what the additional cost would be based on the number of lights, and then get a timeline as to the procurement of those lights, and then the availability of a work crew to get those installed and approach it from that. So rather than doing just piecemeal at this time, we will look at the city spectrum of lighting and determine where we need to do upgrades because I'm sure there are some areas that could use enhanced lumen lighting that have probably not been identified and are missing, so...
Well, Mayor, I think, you know, I don't really want to stop what you've got planned. I wanted to hear your idea and bring it out for discussion so we could look to see what we're going to accomplish. I think that your comment that Evergy is going to have to order and approach it in their own schedule is something to consider, that we don't want to hang back, but yet we don't want to just do one and ignore the others. So, you know, this could be phase one, but I think we do need to look at this. There's been discussion for a few years about lighting in the park, I believe. So, you know, we shouldn't just table and wait till we can do it all, but we have to get it in a plan that we can move forward. So, you know, if you and Commissioner Hayes feel that this is adequate information now to move forward, then that would be fine, but if you feel it'd be better to wait and do it all at once, I think in the end, we need to have a master plan for lighting that covers all the areas so we can go in a forward direction.
Understand, Commissioner. Thank you for your input. I agree with you on that. So, any other comments, gentlemen?
I have none.
All right, then, I don't have any. I think that's a good plan that we need to look at. But for the aforementioned information that I brought to this, I would like to go ahead and entertain a motion on this particular item.
Then I move to authorize the upgrading of 16 streetlights to 9,625 lumens between Oak and Mulberry on North Penn in the amount of $65.18 per month.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving to item J, and that is, consider an ordinance amending ordinance 4348, creating the Independence Land Bank.
Would you like me to review this item?
Do I?
Would you like me to review the item of why the changes were recommended?
No, I don't.
Okay.
We did a lot of discussion on the ordinance before, and I guess the two things that I see with the revision is adding a board that would put requirements or stress a requirement of a certain skill. There's a lot of people that might not have a degree or training that could still have valuable input, and to put performance restrictions on their application, I think restricts the selection process. From what I see of the land bank, it's not a development company, that those skills would be more valuable, but they're acquiring and assembling and then marketing the land, but not holding it on to be, the land bank be a developer as such. The ones with those skills would be more appropriately in a development company that would be the ones purchasing the land bank property and repurposing it. The other item is including citizens from outside the city limit. This is dealing with, in the city, and potentially affecting city funds. And I think this type of city board, it's unlike the planning and zoning, that you have a need to get input from the surrounding areas if you're considering property use that could be affecting the additions adjacent to our boundary. adjacent to our boundary. So I question the need of modifying our resolution. We had nine applicants for seven positions. Each one seemed skilled and been involved in various aspects. I don't think they applied because of the requirement of a certain gift to be on the committee, but they have a definite interest in revitalizing houses and moving property into useful tracts of land. So I, I just don't see that we need to modify the ordinance, that it seems to be functioning. If it becomes an issue later on, we can do that, but why change the ordinance again when we just now appointed the board?
Mayor, may I speak to that, please?
Yes, go ahead, April.
Upon visiting with several of the communities, especially Pittsburgh, that was something that Pittsburgh did not do originally, and they came back and modified, and it was something that they highly encouraged because they found once you got into this, those expertise skill setting on the board was beneficial. And if you look at the applicants that we have, they have those expertise. So we, yes, we are beneficial that we do have those, this go around. And it, you know, it's up to the commission what you want. I'm just trying to bring you those, since this is new to us, those communities who have done this and some of the things, and visiting with Hutch or, I'm sorry, another community in the Wichita-Hutchison area, and I can't think of what it was, they too highly recommended you to look at these skill sets to have on the board. It just helps things move forward. You're not having to contract out for some of these skill sets at a cost. It's just a cost savings to the land bank board as well, because there's times that you'll find yourself needing that legal assistance, construction assistance knowledge, that type of thing. So, real estate and banking, they just strongly encourage you to include that. I missed it first time around. It was my fault for not catching it in the ordinance, so.
What we run into when we put these restrictions in by not being a town of Pittsburgh or Wichita size, we end up with members on the board that are, have served six to eight terms because no one else possesses that, that skill. So, and again, it's, we just started, we can always modify an ordinance, but to modify, now we have, we've got three years to get into it, to see how it works. At that time, well, really, six, if after three, their first terms, they can eligible to go for a second term. So, you know, we've got a lot of time to see how, how it does work, other than putting the restriction on us right away. We'll have in two years, two positions that would be up if they decide not to apply again. So we've got time to see what would work, but we do have some that we've put restrictions on that end up serving way beyond the two term because there's just not that skill set and.
Clarifying question then, if you don't mind. The restrictions that, the restricted fields are real estate, law, finance, and building trades. I'm not sure, when you say real estate, who or what skill sets or what types of professionals would fall into the real estate category?
Well, a Realtor, closing agents, that type of, of activity. Somebody that is as familiar with the current real estate trends, the current real estate law.
What about someone who is in the real estate rental business?
Yes.
Would they fall into that category?
They could, yes.
Very good. And then law, who would fall into the law category of that skill set?
Attorneys. Again, somebody that's familiar with real estate law. I mean, Jeff, I don't know if you have a better answer than what I'm giving, but.
You don't have, it says you can be in that field or have a demonstrated interest in the field also.
Demonstrated interest in law.
It's a little broader than you're trying to make.
Very good. And then finance, who would fall into the finance category?
Anybody who is in banking. Real estate banking is beneficial. Anyone who, CPAs, bookkeepers, that type of thing.
Stockbrokers? Financial advisors?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's broad. It's not, they just highly encourage you to bring those skill sets to the table so that there's certain times that you're going to have to, if you've got an attorney who's sitting there or somebody who is familiar with real estate law, it benefits you in not having a cost because they, they're serving on the board and they can assist you. Land banks are not lucrative, and so they have found that if they can give those skill sets that donate their time to the board, it helps and benefits the land bank budget in, in bringing that skill set to where we're making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Very good. And then building trades are contractors and subcontractors, people who have, or work in the building trades. What about building material retailers?
It could as well. You could also have somebody who is familiar with flipping houses or somebody who serves on other housing initiatives that deals with construction.
Can I suggest a compromise? In the third line where it says, "All appointees shall be persons who," maybe you should say, "One or more appointees shall be persons from these fields." That way, perhaps you'll have at least one person from these fields, but then it would open it up for anybody to fill those other positions. Just a thought.
I noticed that there is a grace granting statement that immediately follows the detailing of the, of the fields, and that is the one that says that the government, governing body may waive this requirement should there be a reasonable effort and no applicants of this nature are filed.
And that's the purpose of that statement because there has been issues on other boards that have had that drilled down.
So you made an attempt to at least cover the eventuality that there are no candidates. There are willing candidates, but there are not candidates who particularly fall into any of the skill sets, job categories, or occupations that we just listed.
That was the intent of that statement.
I understand. Well, that seems like it's, covers, but not only the intent to, to encourage those skill sets to participate, but also the opportunity for the governing body to proceed without those skill sets, should that be the case with the current set of applicants.
And it is. I mean, it's, yes, and back to, you know, Leonard Commissioner's comment on, you know, outside the area. One of the challenges that in visiting with real estate bankers inside, that live inside the city limits, we have one, two, that we could come across that, have that skill set, you know, that handles real estate banking. And so sometimes you do have a challenge finding that skill set within certain boundaries, and that was the thought process of maybe opening it up a little bit so that, you know, again, I don't know. This is new. I'm just going off of best practices that was recommended to us, trying to make sure when we get out of the gate, we're starting off knowledgeable and, and in essence, not screwing up, you know, getting those people at the table. And in looking at that, that was just something that we wanted to make sure, and I know, as you stated on some of the other boards, we do have challenges getting certain skill sets. So that was the thought process of maybe opening it up just a little bit.
Why not change it from, "All appointees shall be persons who have demonstrated," to making it broad that it is recommended that the appointees be persons but not limited? Because when you're starting to talk of, what I hear you saying is you want people with these skill sets there, and now you're concerned that they don't, so we're designating certain positions to be in that skill set, which, you know, I, I don't, I think we limit because we keep coming up with the same people on the committees for extended period of time because of that limit, but we're not saying how many contractors, not how many bankers. So maybe we got a whole board and all we get are real estate applicants, so are we going to try and whittle it down to none? You know, I think that the best is to open it up with no restrictions and, you know, go out and solicit when there's openings to these people to be in. And usually with, you know, it, it's something that can always be modified later if it gets that particular to name and assign how many positions are needed to be in a, in a certain skill set. But, you know, I think for us just getting started where we have nine applicants for the committee that we can go without modifying the ordinance right off the bat.
And absolutely. I mean, if you look at who you just appointed, they have that skill set. So we can learn from that and see if it is beneficial or not. So it's up to the commission. As I said, I'm just trying to impart knowledge that they don't have from people who have experienced it.
I, I just took it, as far as the starting point, this was a good place to start. I looked at all the candidates and they were, they all brought something different to the table.
Absolutely.
And I tried to make a good mix of where they could complement each other. Now, down the road, that may change. We may, there may be some that we may no longer need that particular skill set. We may need to bring some, something else in. I didn't want it to be restrictive and make that the only skill set that I wanted to bring. I wanted to make sure that, that it was varied and that I knew it could change down the road. This is something new. And things change. And the only other point I was trying to make about expanding the area to maybe like a three mile limit was that there are boards that we have trouble getting people on, and we, we have the same people that rotate from one board, they get off one, they go to another, or they get on multiple. And, you know, I, I thought of a person or two that live within the three mile limit of independence, and they would be more than willing to serve, but, but they're not going to be able to because they're not inside of city limits of independence. You know, there's areas that, but right up to the city limits that have people that would probably be willing to, to serve, but, but they're not going to be able to because they do not live within the, the city limits, and the boards, they can serve on a very limited. So that was my only purpose in trying to open that up because this may be something that we face down the road, to continually find new people that are willing to step forward and take on this. But I didn't, I didn't look at this as being restrictive. I tried to get a varied, we had a varied group of people that applied, and they all brought a different skill set, some that we could use, some that I thought would complement. And like I said, things are subject to change as we move on, so.
Absolutely.
That's my comment.
And there's got to be a benefit for living within the city limits, too. That you have access to serve on the board, so.
But I think we were only looking at, only one, one position out of the.
Well, it says a majority.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it says, "The majority of which shall be residents of the city."
I would never want more than one person outside the city limits. I would never agree to anything more than that. But that gives someone a chance that if you could recruit that happen to live on the other side of the street, that would be willing to serve, that you could be able to at least bring a body in.
So you're saying similar, similar to the planning and zoning where you specify the exact number, the one?
Yes.
Since it's a smaller board.
Yep, one. And I missed that. That's my fault.
I think, I think it's something, like I said, we need to get it going. Get some action in the, in the board, let them get their feet wet, see what, what direction it's going to go, and then revisit and maybe address the, with like your suggestion, a one outside city limits, or, you know, is seven going to be enough, or do we need to go to nine? You know, just, let's evaluate it after a couple of years to see how, how it's going and instead of just changing it right off the bat.
I'm, I'm good with that. Commissioner Hayes, what's, what's your thoughts on that? Would you be good with that?
I'd be good with that also.
Okay, okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, April. Okay, so do I have a motion, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we table any action regarding the modification of ordinance 4348.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving to item four. Item four, commission action. Item A, consider proposal for the annual fireworks display. Jim Kelly? Jim, how are you this evening?
Doing good.
Good to see you. Long time no see.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I come again this year on the fireworks display. This is my 30th year to do this, and we are looking at a couple of bids that I asked the fireworks company to do. One for a show with the same shell count as last year and one with the same budget as last year. And so the same shell count as last year, of course, equals a higher price, and the lower price, the deductions is, you can see what was in your packet, is really in the larger shells. So about 20% of the show is, is in larger shells that are lost in this. So that's where the noticeable will be doing. Now, I would imagine that the recommendation could be for the lower amount because the budget is less than that. So far, I've raised $5,100, so, in the, this is into the second week. But my suggestion would be that since this is the end of the 150th anniversary year, and we started it off with a celebration that was funded by the city and one other contributor, that we end it with a similar celebration this year. I think the difference in price is a little under $1,000, and the, the amount, I think, when you look at 20% of the show are in the big shells that come in, and the shows that are left are the ones that are kind of thrown in with the big shells, that it might be worth at the end of the 150th anniversary celebration to end it at the same level that we begin it, and with the hope that can raise versus last year where the city funded predominantly all but the excess portion, that we will raise already more than the excess portion this year, and hopefully we'll have a good, we'll have all of the rest of May and June to raise. That my suggestion would be that you might look at the show with the same shell count as last year to have as good of a ending as there was a beginning. So it'll be same fireworks company that we've used in the past, and the, last year, I thought the. And, uh, uh, the, uh, last year, I thought the, the shells in the show and these are, uh, these are comparable, the shells in the show were, uh, very good, lots of new designs. And so that's just my suggestion, but just wanted to report, uh, on the amount of money raised to date and, uh, the, uh, and that we're with the same fireworks company again this year.
Jim, I have a question. Um, on, on average, on your fundraising, what, I know it varies, but on an average, what normally do you, uh, collecting funds to help, uh, put this firework display on?
Well, normally, uh, we've in general raised enough to cover all of the show.
Okay.
I don't know what, you know, I don't know what this year will be with, uh, with the COVID, uh, incidents and business shutdowns and having difficulty finding employees to ramp back up, uh, to full speed, what we might get from some of, because most of the donations, most of the larger donations, uh, come from the business community versus individuals. Uh, do have one very nice one in from an individual, from a husband and wife right, right now. And, uh, there'll, there'll be a few more like that. But a lot of it depends on what comes out of the business community and how their businesses have recovered from fifteen to eighteen months of, of slowdown.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jim. Commissioners?
Well, Jim, it's just, uh, uh, and a kind of an amazing number that you have been doing this for thirty years. And I don't know whether the, the community has thanked you enough for your dedication to bringing this to, uh, to us in each of those thirty years. Thank you so much for all of the effort to bring us the fireworks and help us fund the fireworks for so many years.
Thanks, that would include the year the show blew up. And, and, and all of that, so yes. But it's, uh, it's something that I, I've said before that I, I don't think a town, uh, named Independence should not have a good fireworks show at the Fourth of July.
Indeed.
Kelly, what have we budgeted for the fireworks show?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, and he's already raised over five.
And how much did we spend last year, do you recall?
Um, all of it except for your one donation you got, right, Jim?
Right, yeah. We had the donation last year, uh, covered, uh, um, covered the difference between the higher shell count and the lower shell count, so.
Do you recall what that amount that the city?
Uh, I think that the city probably had, and, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, I would say that, uh, the city probably had, uh, in the fifteen thousand range, something like that. Uh, because the other donation we received was, was over twelve or thirteen hundred dollars, so.
Okay, so what we could do is, uh, look at the larger show and allow you to continue fundraising. And if we agreed to pay the difference between the two, we would still, right now, we would be less than what we committed last year, correct?
That's correct.
What do you, what do you feel, commissioners?
I think that we should, uh, set our sights on the, the higher number to begin with and, uh, and, uh, then the fundraising efforts will, uh, I think, fall in line with that.
I agree, gentlemen.
It, it sounded like, you know, we could still allow the city to have a large show and actually the city would be spending less right at this moment, right?
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
That's a plan that's kind of hard to beat. All right, uh, any further questions, gentlemen?
No.
The, uh, the number is seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the larger show, is that correct?
Correct, uh-huh.
Okay, I'm prepared to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then, let me have it.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Rainbow Fireworks Incorporated for the Fourth of July fireworks show in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, subject to city attorney approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We'll keep trying to raise money.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
All right, item B, uh, consider authorizing the mayor to sign a proclamation declaring May sixteenth through May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one as Emergency Medical Services Week. Sean, how are you this evening?
Good evening, commissioners. American College of Emergency Physicians, or ASAP, was instrumental in establishing EMS Week when President Gerald Ford declared November third through the tenth, nineteen seventy-four, as the first National Emergency Medical Services Week. This annual observance continued for four more years and was then reinstituted by ASAP in nineteen eighty-two. Around this time, the observance of EMS Week was moved to September. In nineteen ninety-two, EMS Week was again moved to be the third week in May. The move was made to separate EMS Week from Fire Prevention Week in October. The rationale for the move was the majority of fire and EMS services felt having the two events back-to-back hurt the effectiveness of each program, so EMS Week was moved to May. Now, this has been a very trying year, year and a half, for not only EMS but healthcare employees in general. During the peak of COVID, we had employees that actually were living at the station for fear of taking COVID home to their families. And I'm grateful to have a dedicated staff who as part of this job have to sacrifice missing family events and milestones, but yet come to work to provide care and compassion for others. We are on track right now to have the busiest year ever. Last year, we had two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen calls and five months into this year, we're at one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine calls. This year already, we have dealt with severe, several tragic incidents and numerous deaths, but we will continue to provide quality medical care and fire protection for the citizens of Independence and the surrounding areas.
Thank you, Sean. I, I think you're right. Um, the medical personnel that had to contend with the, um, COVID-nineteen, uh, you know, before there were, there were, uh, vaccinations available to be spread out, uh, through the country. Uh, you know, that they had to do their best to protect themselves, to, to keep well, so they could treat people that were infected. Um, and I know that was a daunting task because, uh, you can only hope that you have all your protective equipment on and you're doing everything possible to prevent yourself from being contaminated by someone that was, that was infected. Uh, so my hats are off to them and all medical workers, but especially EMS. They are the first ones that make the appearance, whether it's, uh, an illness or an accident or whatever. Uh, they're first on the site to evaluate the situation before that patient is transferred to the appropriate facility. So I, I'm glad to see that we are able to, uh, recognize them and proclaim this week as Emergency Medical Services Week. So, um, commendation to all that, that do what they need to do and they do it, uh, to the best of their ability. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, um, can I have a motion on this?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a proclamation declaring May sixteenth through twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one as Emergency Medical Service Week.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, um, the item. Item C, consider the following recommendations from the Planning Commission. Item one, adopt an ordinance setting forth text amendments to the zoning code on the subject of medical clinics, outpatient services, and medical laboratory services. And two, adopt a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to operate medical clinics, outpatient services, and medical laboratory services at twenty-seven hundred West Main Street. So let's, uh, talk about item number one, adopting an ordinance.
Mayor, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on April twentieth and, uh, by unanimous vote, they recommended approving this text amendment. There were no public comments other than, uh, Labett's applicant as this relates to their, uh, conditional use request.
All right, and looking at this, the, um, that area is designated as a light industrial district in M-one.
The building is light industrial, the parking lot is, uh, C-four.
C-four. Okay.
But, but this is located within the building.
All right. All right, commissioners, questions or comments, please?
So by the text amendment, all we're doing is adding the wording to allow this new use to fit into our.
Permitted and conditional use table as a conditional use, not as a permitted use.
Right.
A conditional use is, uh, uh, granted to a, a business or an entity, right? It is not granted to the pro, the property permanently, am I right?
It, it could be, um, to the property. A lot of it depends on how, if the conditions are worded.
I see.
But generally, it's related for a specific use, like somebody will get a, one for a daycare in a residential zone. Well, it's, it states if there's a new applicant that it would not continue because it's related, it's directly related to that person. But if it was a business and say somebody sold the business, the conditional use would still apply.
Thank you. Gentlemen, any other questions?
I have no questions concerning the text modification.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, so we'll do this one, one at a time. So do I have a motion for item number one? I move to adopt an ordinance setting forth text amendments to the zoning code to allow medical clinics, outpatient services, and medical laboratory services as a conditional use in an M-one light industrial district. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. And then two, to consider request for a conditional use permit. Uh, any comments on that? We're good?
Unless, uh, you'd like to explain what, what all is going to be.
Sure, I'd be glad to, so.
Thank you, Don.
Good evening, thank you, commissioners. So we, uh, started developing or looking for a place for physical therapy and doing therapy services in, uh, Independence. Um, we are out of room at the Independence Healthcare Center. So we're looking for something close to where we are currently, um, but still be able to provide those services. And when CalCor closed, that kind of gave us the opportunity for doing it in that building. Um, and, uh, as we were researching signage and things like that, we found out the zoning was not correct for us to be in there, so that's where we went through the process. So, uh, we actually have Emily here today. She's our physical therapist, it's gonna be here, she lives here, and has family here, so.
So, yeah, what type of therapy will you be offering?
Physical therapy, uh, occupational therapy, and speech therapy, so.
Okay.
We'll start out with physical therapy and kind of grow from there, so.
Okay.
And we included laboratory use in case they ever needed to do that there, that they would be covered, wouldn't have to go back through this process.
Okay.
Uh, these are services that would not be, uh, have not been programmed in the, uh, addition that will be coming in the future for the, uh, the current location.
Correct, yeah. These services aren't going to be in the main facility. However, we are looking at developing maybe a piece of that property to have it eventually over there, yes.
Okay. All right. Any further comments or questions?
And the only conditions, Kelly, that were added to the conditional use permit is that it's not transferable to another location and the applicant must follow all city codes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Hayes?
I'm good.
All right, I need a motion, please.
I move to adopt a resolution granting a condential, conditional use permit for medical clinics, outpatient services, and medical laboratory services in an M-one light industrial district at twenty-seven hundred West Main Street with the following conditions. A, the conditional use permit is not transferable to another location, and B, the applicant must follow all city codes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda here. Item D, consider approval of patio two-ten sidewalk modifications.
Mayor, uh, we received a request from Miranda regarding patio two-ten, and I have Sean Turner here who can speak to it. Uh, Miranda had him come down and look at this. But the request is to install a trench with a grate cover for electrical cords in the food truck, a French drain, as they would like to change the grass to artificial turf so that it can drain, and install a five-foot ramp into patio two-ten rather than a second curb for ADA access. So, Ray, uh, Sean, I'll let you.
Sure, this, uh, the patio two-ten project adjoins the, um, KDOT-funded project between eighth and tenth. So we've met with, uh, that group a couple of times. And these are just some, uh, modifications to that project they've requested. We've estimated the cost to do that, that, that would, uh, those would be technically not eligible KDOT costs, but, uh, so it'd be, become a city cost. And you're well over the maximum KDOT, uh, KDOT grant anyway, but, uh, we just felt that was something that, uh, the commission needs to discuss and decide upon.
After looking at it, uh, Sean, first the, uh, electrical grate cover in the sidewalk. Um, I guess firstly, I have a problem with the food truck going on to the, across the sidewalk and into the property, vehicle and pedestrians. Even though it's a limited exposure, still it's something that at all times, I think, should be avoided. So, you know, the, the option is then food truck off the alley, which would be no conflict or all, or use parking in the, the parking area along the curb. Um, you know, there was mention of a turned-down curb. I think that kind of affects drainage flow along the gutter. But if the parking was in the designated parking area parallel to the curb, I, I, I think I could be more open to that.
I, I think that, and I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner, but I believe the idea is they would park there and then there would just be a casting in the sidewalk for their cord to run over to electric. One of the food vendors had mentioned doing this because at Neo Walla time, there's so many cords out that it becomes a hazard. So I think it just would allow them the option to park a truck at the curb and then the, the cord would be essentially under the sidewalk going to the electric.
Well, I, I think we should not allow parking on the patio itself. It should be on the street. And for that, what, since we're gonna have the sidewalk up, what about a power pedestal at the, the curb level? Or, you know, are we replacing the, uh, lights, the light poles?
Yeah, those are, those are questions I, I can't answer. It was just really their, take, us taking their requests to, to mesh into our project. Those are things that are really being handled by, by Miranda and I, and I don't have the answer to those, so.
Well, I think from what we ran into on some of the other streetscape, that the existing poles with a cast iron base, the pipe is direct buried into concrete in the ground and some of it had deteriorated. I think we should, there's a power pole or light pole close to the southwest corner of Golden Silver Building. light pole close to the southwest corner of Golden Silver Building that the power could be incorporated into the power pole or pedestal put close by so that there's no cords ran. What happened in Hutchinson years back, they had a plaza, and the power was underground, unprotected, and a girl was electrocuted from the wires. And I I think if you have a power pole or pedestal to connect in, then you've got your disconnect there protecting the conductors from that back to the electric panel. And that would be the proper way instead of running cords under a trench, because we can't control the type of cord, or we shouldn't have to go do extra policing for that, so.
We'll, I'll look. I can't answer that tonight. I'll look and see where the poles are going to land, the light poles, and we are working with on on those relocations. So, we'll see if a power source could be incorporated into one of those light poles. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and and I know, this is just some ideas, and the trench for your drainage, you've got a downspout at the southeast corner of the building north of the patio. So, you're gonna have to put a trench through the sidewalk with a cover. So, instead of putting a separate one for the planting area, you could provide a drain and use the same trench, so we're not having two trenches within a few feet of each other.
Yeah, I will have to look at that as well. I'm not, that's something we take a look at.
Yeah. The, and the ramp is all gonna depend upon your elevations that you establish with your curb and gutter replacement and your walk replacement exactly.
Correct. So, we, there's going to be a ledge when we meet ADA requirements at the edge of their property, and it will either take a curb, if we put a curb there, then it's not gonna be ADA compliant. So, basically, they've requested a five-foot sidewalk, five-foot piece of sidewalk to go into their property, so that they are ADA compliant.
I think we need to look at some alternates for the power and the connection of the downspout and the drain line from the the planting area or turf area, that that would, that would work a lot less money, less confusion. You know, the the power pedestal could be secured and provide good connection for the food truck there. But, you know, I just am not in favor of driving the truck across the sidewalk into the plaza.
I just wanted to mention that Travis Blankenship is doing our electrical work there, and we did run electrical to the last two light poles on the patio so that we could do a tower similar to what they have at Neo Walla. So, that is coming. So, I mean, we do have that going. I'm not sure about the light, the light poles near the Golden Silver, what their intentions are with that. But we do plan on having a tower there.
Right.
And there is electrical to the the two outer poles.
But then they could connect on at that point and route power out to the pedestal or to the curb. Or, if we're replacing the lights, there could be a possibility of providing a circuit there for the food truck separate. That's kind of what.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on the the lighting that's on the road when it gets replaced, if that's possible.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's good that we're looking at this now, but I don't think that's, this is a final solution.
Question about about driving across the sidewalk at that point that is indicated in the drawing. Is there possibility that that would be damaged by that type of traffic? Would it destroy the sidewalk after it is in place?
For areas where we know there's going to be traffic, we will thicken up the sidewalk to a six-inch reinforced concrete, so it would would be able to handle that traffic.
So, that would make it more or less identical to the driveway that's opposite going into the Booth Hotel?
Correct.
Would that be six-inch reinforced concrete as well over there?
Yes, yes.
All right, commissioners, any other comments, suggestions?
I think John, Sean needs to visit with, look into it on how to provide the drain and power options before we take action.
Yeah, we can do that. We can dig into it a little deeper and approach the commission again.
All right. So, at this point, basically, we're gonna, we're gonna table this until you do some more inquiring as as to me, to answer some of the questions that we've had concerning this particular project. Okay, all right, we'll hearing back from you in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Do I, do I need to make a motion to table that?
I mean, you did a motion on an earlier one, but I don't know that if it actually requires that.
I'll do it. Do I have a motion to table item D?
I make a motion that we table considering modifications to the sidewalk for patio two-ten.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item E, consider proposals for work at Memorial Hall.
Mayor, I have John Heckman here, and he'll come up here, and he's gonna speak. We went out for proposals on the first part of this for Memorial Hall because we had leaks in the roof. We have some issues with the doors and also the smoke hatch. So, we contracted with Miranda, and John took the lead on this, put the scope. So, I'll let him, you might tell him about what you discovered. We did not have to bid for the roof leak.
Yeah, when we, when we replaced the roof, can't remember if it was somehow thirteen or oh-eight on my mind. But anyway, Ray Roofing came back, and it actually became a warranty issue. And it took them a couple of weeks, but they got back into town and corrected those. So, we'll kind of see as we, as we move forward if they got all those. As far as the maintenance work goes, we ended up with two bids. We received those on the twenty-ninth of April. We had Decker Construction and Hofer and Hofer. And what we did was we bid as the base bid, we bid the replacement of the north doors. And these are the north doors that are right on the next level, and they're the exit doors that go out to the north. And a few years back, they had been renovated, and is the classic thing of, of, you know, wood panel doors, had the recess panel on the bottom. They just have not held up to the weather and to the point that, you know, you could just push them in and enter the building if a person wanted to. So, I approached the the state of Kansas, the Historical Society, and talked to them about it and showed them the condition and the problems we've had. And they agreed that it would be okay to to replace with storefront doors, as long as we kept the same configuration of the window, kind of created a little recess panel within it. And so, they're, they're good with that. And in fact, we can even apply for tax credits for that work. And so, along with the north doors on the base bid, we're looking at replacing the smoke vents that are up above the stage upstairs, up on the roof. And so, those two numbers are combined there, and you can see Decker was at eighty-one-nine, and Hofer and Hofer was at seventy-three-nine. And then we, we went around and looked at the west doors, the main entry doors, and found them to be in nearly as bad a condition as the north doors. So, we thought it might be beneficial to put that in this bid. So, we put it in as an alternate. And you can see, Hofer was a little higher on that at thirty-five-four, with Decker at thirty-two-nine. But when you add them together, since, since it was an alternate, we have Decker with a total bid of a hundred and fourteen-eight, and Hofer and Hofer with a bid of a hundred and nine thousand three hundred. So, our recommendation, if you have the funds to do it, is to go ahead and include alternate one with it, and it would be to award it to to Hofer and Hofer for the one oh-nine-three-hundred.
Kelly, do we have funds available for this?
David has worked with Lacy, and she has reviewed this before David made the recommendation.
I'll have Lacy come up here in a minute on the next one, so she can talk to you guys about the funding.
Okay, all right.
You were replacing the frames and all, weren't you?
Yes, uh-huh. And what we're able to do is, is the, it kind of worked out nice. They've got some pretty fancy molding around the jams and and up at the head. We're leaving the, we're leaving the transoms alone, because they're really not in bad shape. But what we're actually gonna do is just cut out the width of the frame, kind of plow it out, and stick the frame right in there. So, the trim will all stay like, I mean, really essentially will look pretty much the same. Storefront will just hold up so much better. And then we can actually get a painted finish that will match. That was the other thing. They didn't want like a bronze finish. They wanted a painted. So, we've got a painted finish we can get to match the existing paint, in fact. So, I think it'll be, it'll be the sort of thing, average person drive by, you'd never know it was any different. But it'll just, it'll last so much longer, be much safer. And the building will be so much more secure this way as well.
Didn't you specify continuous gear hinges?
Yes.
So, that's gonna keep them square.
Continuous hinges. We did con air, so we've got the welded corners. You know, the only thing I don't like, but there's no way around it, I went ahead on the north doors, I put in a demountable mull, so we could actually use rim panics. But on the west doors, we have to use the rods, because I don't think we want them all. You know, we have large crowds going through. So, but you've got that now, so there'll be at least newer updated hardware. So, that ought to, ought to work a lot better.
The roof, wasn't it a thirty-year?
Yep. It's a thirty-year Firestone Platinum. So, that's, that's the nice thing. Ray's so large, Ray Roofing, they even have a crew that all they do is go around and fix leaks. So, that, that'll be good for many years to come. And really, this was all down at the scupper entrances at the drains. The rest of the roof's fine. It was just down at that point.
Is there any roofing involved in changing out the smoke vents?
What we're trying to do is to use the roof curbs that are there with with the roofing that's there. So, what we're gonna have them do is, is they'll actually field verify the exact size and make it to fit, so it'll sit right on the existing curb. And the other thing, the, the brand that was submitted actually has a powder coat finish too, which I thought was kind of nice. So, I, I feel we're, that's a, that'll be a big upgrade as well, with those smoke hatches.
That's good.
Yep.
Commissioner Hayes?
I'm good.
Good? All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor, the other part of this, there's two more. Project number two is a project that's actually been going on for a while. Kelly had started it, and Lacy and I have been working on it with Neo Walla. It's projectors and screens for the auditorium stage. This will allow them to project their backgrounds versus buying backdrops for the Neo Walla. It will also allow us to get more utilization out of our auditorium. We can have speakers. They can do PowerPoints. If movie night gets rained out downtown, they can move to Memorial Hall. It's gonna make the use of our auditorium just more available to be used. So, we've been working on that, and Lacy's here. She can speak to the financing. And project number three is, we have some rigging work to do, but in visiting with Lacy, this is a project we need to push off to twenty-twenty-two. So, I'll let her talk to you a little bit about the financing and how we're paying for all this.
So, projects one and two are are what I have as available to be financed with in twenty-twenty encumbered funds and then twenty-twenty-one budgeted funds. Neo Walla is contributing about seventeen percent to the projector project, which is a great help. It's just a little bit under nine thousand dollars. So, we, and they're gonna pay that over two years. So, with with their help, we are able to to fund projects one and two, but not project three.
Kelly, refresh my memory on this. We talked about this earlier. This is, you'd given a dimension of the screen that we were looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And that has remained?
No, we, we modified that when Neo Walla was not interested in participating in the screen costs, because that screen cost was meant to fill the whole back of the stage below the curtain level. And they decided they just wanted to project on the site.
Okay.
So, they are participating in the the site part. So, we shrunk that screen down to a sixteen-nine ratio, which is what you would typically use for a PowerPoint or a movie, so that it would be conducive for that, which lowered the the cost of that.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that 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 hadn't changed, and what we talked about earlier, that remained the same.
Yeah, we got a new quote for that.
Okay, okay. Gentlemen, commissioners?
So, project three is put on hold for now?
Correct.
And will they hold the price, or will have to rebid?
She said that she would hold the price to January, and Lacy and I just, Kelly just need to figure out if we're gonna be able to fund it in January, and.
We need to do it at some point. We've got some issues with some of the the battens, and we wanna lock some of those out because of future maintenance, and there's some brakes that need to be repaired. And so, I mean, it will need to be done, but we can wait until January to do it.
So, this price is for the reduced number?
It's to lock them out in place, right, David?
Yeah, that price there at a hundred and forty-one-five-eight-one was to do all the maintenance and lock them out.
Okay.
When we can do it.
And that was rebuilding the brakes?
Yeah. Well, that is rebuilding the brakes.
On the remaining battens.
Yeah, when I visited her with her last week, she's really encouraging us to go to electric brakes. And she would like to later give us a option to go to electric brakes. She said the maintenance does away with all these maintenance issues that we're dealing with with these brakes.
Well, what's the difference in repairing the brakes that we have compared to replacing them with?
She said they just cannot give us a warranty on repairing them and can't guarantee them.
But if, if we're gonna spend five thousand dollars repairing the brakes without a warranty, and we're spending fifteen thousand for new electric brakes, are we better off to look and come back and just wait till we can get the electric brakes?
Yeah, maybe.
I think that when we're, when we're closer to to being ready to do this project, we'll, we'll reevaluate and come back to it. I mean, this is something that's gonna have to be brought back to you for formal approval of that project three, because it's not a, a current year budgeted item.
So, I'm sorry.
I think they also mentioned that it could, the possibility could be that some of those brakes aren't gonna be fixable once they break them down and look into them. So, that was also, that was not a guarantee that they were all gonna be able to be refurbished and to put back in use, because some of them may not be, and they won't know until they they break that, that item down to determine if it's even workable to to rehab.
And then we could have money in breaking them down to find out that they're not repaired, that we could have gone just to replace it with an electric brake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seems to me that with the addition of the projector and the screen and the other new technology that we're adding, that this, the scope of this third project might be also something that we will continue to learn about, because we may not need as many battens going forward because of the additional capabilities we're adding.
So, you're suggesting that we may need to lock out more than ten battens? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm saying that it would be a good conversation to have.
And we did meet with Neo Walla and go over that, and they actually told us which battens specifically that they would prefer were locked out, and that's where we came up with that number, is working with them, 'cause they're the ones that really use it.
Indeed.
One last thing, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on the Memorial Hall staff. Uh, if you've noticed, they've been painting down here.
Yep.
And doing a lot of wall repair and really doing a great job down here. So, Brian and Mike, uh, uh, really appreciate, uh, what they're doing here at Memorial Hall to keep it and kinda refresh it down here.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah.
I like the smell of new paint.
Yeah.
I can smell it now. Okay. Alright, if there's no further questions, um, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to approve Hofer and Hofer's proposal for one hundred nine thousand three hundred dollars for door and smoke hatch repairs and authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. And, uh, the next motion, please.
I move to approve Heartland AV's proposal for sixty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars sixty-five cents for dual projectors, Cyclorama, screen, and DVD player, and authorize, authorize the mayor to sign any related documents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item F, consider awarding the Zoo Master Plan Project to PGAV Architects. And that, uh, I'm gonna entertain a motion that we table action on this at this time. Do I have a second? Excuse me.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item G, consider approving a contract with Graham Construction for ADA work.
Mayor, again, Sean's here to help us with this. Uh, this is related to several things, and he can discuss it. But the main one is, we're working with the Department of Interior on, uh, ADA complaint at the Dog Park. And Sean's been working with us to help resolve that, and he can discuss that and what we're doing down there. And then, some of the other things, uh, we've approved previously. We just gotta renew the agreements with Graham to get the work done. So, Sean?
Sure. Thank you, David.
Alright, Sean. Go ahead.
We had, uh, previously brought this to the commission as a change order, um, with Graham Construction. Graham requested, since the project is getting so old, that we actually just do it under the form of a new contract with him. Um, the, the old project was getting to be three years old and quite cumbersome for him and us, and also for the city, I believe, to track. So, we did that. And then also, as David mentioned, there's a couple of issues at the Dog Park that have been brought, brought up regarding ADA access. So, there is a additional, uh, proposal for sidewalks to serve the Dog Park. And also, uh, we've added a damaged ramp on Main Street. It's the last, last item in the schedule. It's, uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
For the, the, the location of the ADA benches, it's in the Commons area? Is, are there additional benches inside the park area itself?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna get additional to put out there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that, for, for the ADA, to meet the ADA requirements, we're just putting these in the common area.
And then we're gonna add, so there'll be ADA benches in the Commons area and in the Dog Park?
Yes, yeah.
Will we have to add more concrete, uh, in that entrance or just, um, uh, concrete anchors for the benches? And the, the screenings will?
Yeah, we had, we had discussed putting, uh, putting screenings or, or granular stone that is a, a hard ADA path into the, into the, the pin areas. And, uh, that would be a pretty, pretty inexpensive fix to get access to those benches, so...
So, are the, are the benches heavy enough that they'll be steady for somebody with a wheelchair making a transfer? That they won't tip over?
We will definitely make sure that they are secure when we get it.
Do you think there will be a modification of the price for?
I don't think so, 'cause even if we need to anchor them, and park staff will assist with that.
Yeah, I would, just that, getting into those, that would be more of a city, city staff installation. But, uh, Graham would also be there to, and he's been very, very good to work with in the past.
So, the benches are actually designed to accommodate ADA?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I think what I heard you say is that the ADA benches are not part of what Graham is providing. They are providing the concrete pads only?
They are providing the, the, um, correct. Uh, uh, and then the, uh, city has previously received a quote on the ADA benches, um, and the drinking fountain.
We have that equipped.
Yes.
And the sidewalk will run from?
Park Boulevard, right there at Cottonwood.
Okay.
And loop up around towards the Dog Park.
Okay.
Yeah, there, cornerstone surveying had previously completed a survey in that area as part of the park master planning effort. And we were able to look at topography there and make sure we were meeting ADA requirements for the slope up to the Dog Parks.
And the water fountains will be located in the?
Commons area of the, of the Dog Park, yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, any other, uh, questions or remarks on this item?
I have none.
I have no more questions.
Alright. Then, um, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the contract for ADA work with Graham Construction for fifty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents for work at one thirteen East Main, South Penn Avenue parking lot, Fourteenth and Chestnut, the Dog Park, and one hundred block of West Main Ramp.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Sean. Excuse me. Item H, consider authorizing a contract for a modified city paving program with Heckard Construction Company Incorporated. John, how are you this evening?
Doing wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, previously, when the RCA went out, uh, for, on this project, uh, we put out to bid Maple Street. Um, as you can see, the RCA does contemplate, instead of Maple Street, Myrtle Street. A couple of reasons for that. Uh, the first, we looked at the number of bidders that this, uh, particular project attracted to the county, and there was only one bidder. We thought by combining and adding additional paving volume to the Maple Street project that was up currently going to happen with KDOT, that we might be able to attract additional bidders and still do that project. Uh, from a funding standpoint, um, Lacy had talked about that potentially being, uh, paid for by a bond. Uh, the incremental engineering to add that to the project, uh, that add Maple Street to the current KDOT project would be minimal, um, because it's a, just a milling and overlay project. So, it would not be significant additional engineering fees. So, looking at that, uh, the question came back, if we did put those streets together and bid them as a package to try and increase the competitiveness of that package, what street would we then want to buil, uh, want to build and want to, uh, want to maintain? In this case, uh, one that came up was Myrtle Street. Myrtle Street is a primary street that's used by fire and EMS. Uh, it's a, it gets a significant amount of traffic, and it is in significant disrepair. So, uh, this particular RCA, um, was put forth in order to, uh, still do the work on the other intersections that we talked about previously, but, uh, so, but, uh, take West Myrtle and use that to replace, uh, West Maple.
On the, um, bidding process, uh, John or Kelly, uh, when you put this out for bid, is it going to just to southeast Kansas, or is it going further out?
The county, actually.
The county does?
Our information.
And they?
They put the bidding out.
Okay.
And then any other cities can join in on the bidding as well with the county. We were trying to do it collectively to get more interest in the project.
So, the idea, so the problem is that the projects are normally not large enough for other paving companies that would want to bid it to come in and do the work. They just feel like it's, the volume, the size, the money involved just isn't enough. So, we ended up with basically getting one bidder.
And when you don't have a, a batch of plant close like we used to, that also plays into this.
So, in the same way, when we, um, that's not really part of this, but it plays into it. When we go out and, and we bid out for, uh, asphalt, you know, I understood that the, the price had gone up on this last time. And then it's basically Heckard out of Pittsburgh that, because they're probably the only one in the area?
Yeah, and you can see where they scratched out one number and put in a different number, so...
Yeah. Okay. I just, just wanted some clarification on that.
John, the, the West Myrtle project would stop at Seventeenth Street. Is that because the, um, the street west of Seventeenth is in good shape relative to the other portion?
Uh, I would say it's, I actually walked that today. Uh, it is slightly better, uh, condition. Uh, I stopped at Seventeenth to create roughly similar-sized projects. So, it takes, takes it from tenth to Seventeenth. The previous one was from tenth to Seventeenth. There's another two blocks, and I'd have to guess another twenty percent. I'm, again, going off the top of my head. Plus, there would be significant additional ADA as well. I, there would be more ADA.
On our original map, when we were putting together future roads last year, we actually had, had Myrtle going from eighth to twentieth. But he was trying to stay within approximately the same scope of the other project.
Looking at dollar per dollar?
Yes.
Same.
And that's a, a segment of the road, uh, does get left, less traffic.
And it'd be easy to add the remainder of, uh, Myrtle Street to another year?
Yes, and, uh, and it does catch the intersection at Seventeenth, which is a, a problem intersection.
Okay. It does get that intersection at Seventeenth and, and, uh, and that, I've noticed that myself is, uh, is rough. Okay, that's my question.
Commissioner Kavish, any?
I have no further questions.
Alright, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, then I need to entertain a motion on this?
I move to authorize a unit price contract with Heckard Construction Company Incorporated for the construction of the twenty twenty-one Independence Paving Program at the unit prices as shown on the bid documents for an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Item I, consider authorizing blocking of the six hundred block of South Eighth Street on Friday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one for spring fleeing activity at Montgomery Place Nursing Home.
Mayor, we were contacted by Ivy, who is the, uh, Director of Activities at Montgomery Place, and they would like to get the citizens out tomorrow. Uh, they're gonna have a little car show and just some different activities there in front of the nursing home for the residents. Uh, you know, coming out of the COVID, being able to get outside and just enjoy, enjoy everything before the rain hits. Uh, so, they've asked if the street could be blocked from ten AM to four PM tomorrow in that block, so the residents can, uh, move about and look at the cars and enjoy the outdoors. And it has been removed by, reviewed by staff, and Public Safety has okayed it as far as blocking off the street.
Okay. Would, would you tell me the, the time that they wanted it blocked out?
Ten AM to four PM.
Okay.
Approximately, she said.
That sounds like a, a good idea. After being, um, confined, I'm sure for an extended length of time, I'm sure they're excited to be able to do something outside, especially since, um, there's been a change in the CDC concerning masks. So, um, the timing is excellent.
It is.
How I look at it, so. Um, I don't have any questions, uh, commissioners?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Alright. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I move to authorize blocking of the six hundred block of South Eighth Street on Friday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one for spring fleeing activities at Montgomery Place Nursing Home?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item J, consider adopting an ordinance initiating the Independence Farmers and Makers Market Board.
Mayor, uh, city staff is requesting this ordinance, and I have Jeff here that could kinda help us too if you have any questions. But just, just kinda goes with our downtown, uh, right-of-way and use authorization policy and just kinda cleaning up the process and, uh, taking care of the farmer's market and, uh, making sure it following all the rules and regulations that are going on and putting it in place.
I understand the people that normally had, um, put this on have since retired.
Yes, sir.
Um, Terry and Carolyn Torrance?
Yes, sir.
Terry Scott. And then I also understood that, uh, there was some, uh, state regulations that we were unaware of that have come to the forefront that we need to address. That's why we are looking at, uh, establishing an, an ordinance concerning, concerning this, so... And according to this, uh, it's already been reviewed by the city attorney, EMC, our insurance, for their approvals, and they've signed off on it. So, and this makes us, um, legal as far as going forward.
Yes.
And then this also, um, uh, helps us, uh, to establish, uh, uh, people that would be able to, um, oversee this, because, uh, someone needs to...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
To oversee the events of this.
And there's a little bit of paperwork involved in it and just...
Sure.
Every, you know, I think they do it twice a week and...
Okay.
Takes a commitment.
Understand. Well, I, I'm glad this is continuing. It's, uh, where it's located, there's a lot of traffic that stops and shows interest and buys products and, and knows where it's at. And it brings more people to spend time in the downtown area, hopefully. And that's a big plus. So, with that, I'm gonna ask my commissioners if they have any remarks, comments they would like to make or questions, uh, concerning this.
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, to me, it seems like for the farmer's market, that's more Main Street or Chamber activity for them managing. We have other activities that, and maybe, maybe that's the direction that the problem I'm seeing is calling at the farmer's market, because Main Street has, uh, First Thursday. There's car shows that people wanna block off downtown. There's other events, so, you know, it, it's, it seems like maybe what we should be establishing would be the, uh, a, a board or committee, a board that would handle all of these. So, if somebody wants to have a car show, uh, like we had in April, they work through this committee, and then they get the... and then they get the applications, they process all that, and they're the ones that take it on up the line so we can make sure they become the enforcing agent because my problem I was having with looking at the farmer's market only, it, it seems like we're going in areas that the city shouldn't be going, occupying our time and staff time. But second thought is maybe we need to go broader with its requirements that, say, establish the central business district or the central core, anything going through that would be handled by, by this group.
Yeah.
I mean, definitely, I, part of the issue with the farmer's market, Commissioner, was just the overall liability. And whereas in the other type of events, those organizations, there isn't as much of a concern, but there is some liability. And we were kind of, Jeff may be able to say, kind of in that position anyway, but we weren't officially organizing the farmer's market, whereas after discussing it with Mara and Jeff, it was best to do it in this type of ordinance and so that it is covered. And those other organizations didn't want to take that responsibility. And that, we looked out to Kansas City, Topeka, and similar organizations, and that's why we came up with this and Jeff was able to put it together then.
Well, what about trunk or treat downtown? That's, is that covered with the liability insurance?
Those through our right of way ordinance that we have in place, when they apply for it, they have to obtain those individual insurance policies and present it to us before we approve them. And every time I get one of those applications, I review it, have Mara review it. Some things don't require additional insurance, but she checks it off for me. Other items do, so.
This item did?
This item does.
Required additional insurance?
And it would require, it was gonna be fairly expensive for an organization for, to buy that for the year. You can sometimes get one day event, if you're just having one farmer's market, spend a hundred bucks or something for the policy, but when you are gonna do it for three or four months, it's gonna be about a thousand dollars for the policy. Whereas our liability covers it under our umbrella. If that makes sense, Commissioner Leonard. So I mean, there's a little of why we did it and how we set it up and difference with other things. When Main Street does a car show and all that, there's different, sometimes it doesn't require liability insurance, like movie night. Mara's okay with movie night as long as there's no bouncy houses, no type of rides or anything like that. If there's any type of those rides, then they would have to provide an event policy covering the event.
So it depends on the, the event determines?
Right. And EMC gives us a specific list that she gives me that we check off, and then I just have her double check it to ensure what needs coverage and what doesn't need coverage for each of the events that go on.
And then you're looking at this event being primarily every Saturday running from March, or not March, May, through what?
I think into, yeah, and then they do it every Thursday evening too.
In the fall?
Yeah, I think that's going on now.
Do they do it on Thursdays?
Lacy?
From May through August?
Or April? You have two farmer's markets going on currently, right? One on Saturdays and Thursdays?
Well, it's, it's together. Farmers and Makers Market, they, they changed the compliant yet.
Yeah.
Saturdays and Thursdays.
Saturdays, it's, right now we're having twice a week.
Okay.
And getting a good.
May, yes, May through August, it's Saturday mornings from seven to eleven, and then starting June through September, it will add Thursday evenings from three to seven.
Okay.
And our first, our first one out again, we had seventeen vendors, there were several more last Saturday. It had a good turnout.
Okay.
And really the, the response of expanding the hours and including both dates was at the request of the vendors.
Okay, okay. So in reading through this, you know, the governance of it is, is looking at as being Main Street, Chamber of Commerce to kind of oversee that because you're looking at multiple dates over a series of several months, which means someone has to be available to, for oversight of that. So it's not something that periodic, periodically happens in May and one event in May and one in September. So is that continued presence of this event would indicate that it would need to be sponsored by those groups that normally would handle car shows and those things anyway, to take responsibility for that and then get that group lined out to where?
Then you'd have one other person that was appointed and then we would have a staff member that would staff the board.
Okay. So that way, there would always be somebody available due to conflicting schedules by the people involved, that someone would likely be able to cover that.
Yeah, I mean, they're spending considerable of their own time trying to make this successful and it's, it does bring a lot of people out.
Yeah, it does. Okay. Any other comments or?
I'm prepared to make the motion.
One more question, so the whole board, this whole board would be under the commission as any other board was?
Yeah, so that, that Main Street would determine who their appointee would be and the Chamber would as well, similar to what we do on the Electrical Board or Plumbing Board. We have Evergy tells us who their appointee is and their representative is. And then Atmos does the same for the Plumbing Board. They tell us who they want to serve in that, and then the mayor makes the appointment, but they determine who that person is.
But in the worst case situation, that if there is an issue with a board member, since it is a city board, then that board member, even though they're not appointed by the city, could be removed by the city?
I would think that the city would validate that whoever their selected appointee would be. Jeff, what do you think? Would it just be like the Electrical Board and Plumbing Board, would they tell us who they want appointed to represent their agency?
Several questions. Leonard's question was, could the city remove a board member? I don't think you could remove a board member from any board. You can, by ordinance, cancel the board out, but I don't think you can remove a board member once they're appointed.
There, there are some bylaws that some boards have, like planning and zoning, if you miss so many meetings, by a certain percentage or so many in a row, I know on that particular board, board members can be removed.
That's statutory, state statute.
Yeah, I thought there was a statute that, with the mayor appointing, that the mayor could also remove if there was an issue of misconduct or something, you know, in that case.
I, I will look, I'm not aware of it, I'll look though.
Okay, any, any other? That's it? We're good? All right then, I, I would like to entertain a motion.
I move to adopt an ordinance establishing the Independence Farmers and Makers Market.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask you to make a simple motion to tail onto what you just did?
Okay.
If you look at section three of the ordinance you just adopted.
Okay.
The, the one power that you reserve is to kind of control the location of the farmer's market. It's subject, it just says it's subject to your approval. You might make a simple motion approving the current location since we've adopted an ordinance now.
Okay, so let's run that through again then.
I mean, just to make that a simple motion, just separate from the ordinance.
I make a separate, a simple motion that the location of the market shall be where it's presently located at, which is, let's see, addressers.
I call it the Animes Parking Lot.
Animes Parking Lot. And do I, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Item five reports. Item A, the Lexa Poll Audit. Chief Harrison, how are you?
Doing pretty good if we can get through these seventy-five slides, so.
I, I, I told you brief.
Okay, you got three minutes. How's your clicker?
We're gonna do it better than that, sir. So just looking at the slides, if you click through there, you can see that we had some areas of excellence that were highlighted. One that I'm particularly proud of is the dealing with folks in crisis and how we handle complaints and internal discipline, things of that nature. Critical finding, don't know how we can address this just yet, but they recommended that we have a holding cell or at least a fixed bench where we can secure a prisoner when an officer is one-on-one with somebody. We have some issues in the property room, which you guys have already funded, and the project is, the physical portion of the project's underway, the policy has been modified, so the procedure needs to be set, so we're knocking on the door to having that complete. Major finding is, you know, with like our firearms training, we have two personnel that are scheduled to go to some training to begin augmenting that. As you know, the pandemic put a hurting on moving a lot of things forward, and this was one of those kind of things with training. They recommend that we consider changing RMS systems to one that automates case management. There's a lot of reasons behind that. I can go into that as deep as you want, but probably not that interesting. And that's something we have been looking at over the years and we just haven't managed to address it. It's a pretty good size undertaking.
Just makes you more efficient?
Makes you more efficient, builds in some automation as far as detecting when someone has gone in and fixed a, a report or when someone's notified there's something that needs to be fixed in a report, easier statistical gathering, just, there's a whole lot of things that can go into an RMS system, so. And there are some things we may be able to modify with the current system that we have to kind of at least do the best with what we have. So there's some implementation issues that we can probably work on with, with our vendor there. As far as people go, you know, they looked at the five pillars of liability. As far as people were concerned, they had some recruiting things you can see there to discuss and some helpful hints on how to do that. Early warning system to, that's a policy that allows us to look at an officer whose name comes up a certain set number of times in a certain timeframe, whether it be complaints or policy violation or something of that nature. We have that policy, we need to make it fit our practices, and I have been scheduled for training to learn how to implement those kind of policies. So that's in the works. One of the things that we've done traditionally is stay away from enacting department policies that the city already has a policy to cover. And what they recommend is that you align your policy with the city policies and go ahead and enact that so that everything's in one place. So that's going to be a long process, but it's on our, it's on our project management for this as well. The training pillar, we kind of already covered. The RMS system, we've covered performance reviews. They, you know, they just had some guidance on how to implement performance reviews, and that's something that we've been working on at the, in our city staff level. We've been slowly working through the performance review process and we've, we've set some goals there. And so where we go with that will definitely align with, with what they're guiding us to do. And then, of course, the employee discipline area was one of our areas of excellence, and I just included some information there for, for everyone to see that, you know, we do take complaints seriously, we don't just gloss over them. We, when there's a problem, we confront it. And so that's pretty, that's, that's it in a nutshell. The next step is we've, I'm roughing out at a project management to begin implementing all these different steps and take an organized approach to this. I want to make sure that we, I don't want to piecemeal it, I want to do it, do it thoroughly and, and address everything that needs to be addressed with thoughtfulness. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Excuse me. All right, moving on. B, city board minutes, we've all had a chance to review the minutes. Are we good, gentlemen?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, item six, city manager comments. Kelly?
Mayor, you asked for an update on the KDOT cost share and Sean is here.
Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, the, our information from KDOT indicates that we, you should hear whether or not you receive the cost share within two weeks.
Two weeks.
Should be this month, yes.
Okay, good. Keep my fingers crossed.
Yes.
That would be great news.
And then I think the, the GI applications are still out there too, so, or CCLIP applications, I should say, so. I don't know the timeframe of those, but generally those are in June when you hear if you've got it or not.
Okay. I knew we were getting closer, hit thirty days from the, I think that was due on April the ninth, so I knew we were getting close to thirty days then, just curious if, if anything had been decided on that. But two weeks, we hope to have some good news then.
Hope so.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sean.
And then the CA McKinney fundraiser, Jared?
Yes, Jared.
Yes, so as you guys are aware, CA McKinney was put on the National and State Memorials in 2021. That, the online candlelight, their virtual vigil actually starts in about twenty minutes or so, eight o'clock on, on YouTube. You can find that on National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund to get to that if anybody is interested in that. Anyway, we are fundraising, they asked for a thousand dollar donation, and then fundraising also for travel expenses for Lisa and I, who worked on the project, to travel to DC for, to see our officer's name unveiled in October at the actual in-person ceremony. And then we're hoping to also have a thousand dollars left over to donate to the Kansas Law Enforcement Memorial. These funds are not tax funded, it's my understanding that they're funded by donations. So we're probably about, close to sixty percent towards our goal for all of that already.
Great.
So really appreciate the support that we've gotten, but we still have a ways to go, so, but we're, we're very pleased and appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Southeast Lift Station, John?
I'll start with the very best news. The new large pump is up, functioning and it's functioning in a stable fashion. We did lose the programmable logic controller, the PLC that drives that pump. We got it fixed the next day, so we were able to keep going on that. We do still have a rental diesel driven pump onsite as a backup, and so we do have that. We're getting prepared to ship one small pump and one large pump back for repair. And as soon as I get more information on the timing, I know that the, the large pump needs a new impeller, which we ordered a couple of months ago, so, yeah, I'm thinking July, August for receiving another large pump back. The small pump just has an electrical cord issue, so as far as we know, we'll have it checked out at the shop. So that should be able to be replaced relatively quickly, one would think. After we get the pumps back, we will get those pumps reinstalled and then we'll get that other diesel pump taken out. We'll, but when we put the small pump in, which we've had, the small pumps, we've had vibration issues, we'll install that first small pump with vibration sensors to understand what's going on within the small pump system. And the other thing that we'll do is the, the pump wells are quite deep, thirty, forty feet deep, and we will look to make sure that those, those wells are periodically cleaned out. Additionally, we've already started implementing preventive maintenance procedures on the pumps. So in order to make sure, for instance, those large pumps lost their impellers because they weren't necessarily running right on the pump curve and thus the cavitation. So we are taking voltage and we're measuring flow rates and pressures, so we're making sure that we're on the curve and that we're not causing more issues with the impeller. Again, the first Again, the first pumps last seventeen, eighteen thousand hours worth of service, so that was, that was reasonable. But we'll be maintaining them, so seventeen, eighteen thousand should be, get even bigger. Let's see. We have started putting all of the other non-functional pumps this week. We'll get a visual evaluation and get them into the repair process.
So I'm glad to hear that a maintenance schedule is going to be set up so we can monitor these prior to events like this happening. That's a good start.
And, and we'll get to the root cause on what happened with those small pumps. But the, again, the commission acting so quickly and getting that pump replacement allowed us to avoid having any incidences or any issues. So that was very, very, very nice and helped me sleep very much, so.
Good. I'm glad, well, we're glad that you're getting sleep.
Yes.
I'm glad that we all sort of focusing in on, on training and a better understanding of how the equipment operates. And that should be helpful. And then I also asked you when I first got here to the building about if we were having any, any other issues like at the wastewater plant or anywhere, we have other motor-driven load, whether we have any instances of failure coming up. But you seem to indicate that wastewater, they pretty good, have a pretty good handle on their motor load, and they, they keep everything up to date and, and pretty much identify minor problems before they become large problems and generally have come up with a solution, which is great.
Yes, and typically it, it's not an emergency, it just gets handled in the flow of business. And I'll give another example of that with the water plant. Last year, the water plant had a blowdown pump fail, sent it off, and it was repaired. Well, this one has been pulled before it failed, and it's being sent off for major maintenance and overhaul. Now, of course, on that one, it's been fifty years since it was overhauled, so it's had a very good run, a very good run.
I hope we, I like the redundancy, and I hope we can get another fifty years out of it when it comes back.
Absolutely.
We'll see. I won't be around, I won't be able to know one way or the other, so. Okay, I appreciate that information.
Thank you.
So on Southeast Lift Station, you're in the process of determining what caused the problem that we have right now?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. You know, getting to a definite root cause on the larger pumps, you know, the check valves were seized on the output. So seized output, you know, when that's pinched down and you're trying to force liquid through there, that causes cavitation at the impeller. So that, I, I don't want to jump to too many conclusions, because typically big problems have more than one root cause, but there's one. And on the small pumps, until someone shows me otherwise, there's vibration occurring in the pumps. We need to understand where it is and why that vibration is occurring. Because these are very commonly used pumps, and they are typically extremely reliable. So what's going on here?
Doesn't do any good to go through all the repairs if you don't have an idea what caused it and then develop a
Exactly.
A maintenance schedule or preventative routine that you can guarantee that.
Exactly, and, and you know, things as simple as making sure that the check valves are fully functional and actuate every time you turn on a pump. And then cycling through the pumps to make sure that, you know, all of the, everything is good hydraulically, checking your voltage, your amperage, checking flow rates, and making, and checking pressures to make sure that everything is right, worshipy, on the curve.
Oh, good.
Commissioner Hayes, any questions for John?
No, John, thank you for your report.
All right, thank you, John.
And then nineteen sixteen City Hall Building D update. There's surveys has been assigned to cornerstone, and that's signed, so they should start working on those pretty quickly. David, do you want to give an update on what happened this week?
Yes, we had the CMARs here on Tuesday. They did the onsite tour from ten to noon, ten to eleven, they were at City Hall, and from eleven to noon, they were at the old fire station. Today, we received the RFQRFPs. We received four of those. I have sent those out to the evaluation team, and I think we have our first meeting on those next Tuesday to start working to determine a CMAR. So the only other question, which you guys might be thinking about, Chris was here with us on the tour Tuesday, and he let us know the utilities at old building, where we're currently at. We may want to start visiting with Evergy and Atmos, because those will have to be moved. And at current schedule, you're about six months from construction. So I told Kelly about that, and that's just something, we need some visit with Vance about letting them know to start the process of relocating those utility lines.
Because the utilities are fed for the apparatus bay from?
Currently, they come out of that, out of the hospital building. But we have that line that's running across. It's going to have to be relocated. And Evergy's going to take it up Fourteenth Street and back around. And then there's a gas line that runs across there. It's going to have to be relocated. And they're both aware of it. It's just Chris mentioned to us, we probably need to start visiting with them about that process, but.
How many people were interested? You got four responses. How many were notified?
Sean, how many were present for the tours? There were nine people there, but pretty much of the questions, the four that responded today were the four that sent questions.
And the nine people could have been
From the, from those.
From the same company?
Yeah, from those companies.
That's good.
All right.
And then on the twenty-seventh, agenda, we'll be considering that conditional use permit for that county parking lot. And I thought it might be helpful before then if the city commission had a work session with the county commission, if they're so inclined, that you can discuss that with each of the commissioners, and perhaps we could do it at their location, if they would host that. And, but before I reached out to them, I wanted to see if you were interested in that or not.
Have we actually heard anything back from Jim Wright, from, from when you initially had contact with him?
Just that they were concerned about if the streets were vacated, putting up gates because people walk in that area. So that's the only comment I got back on that. So they didn't seem too interested in that, but they wouldn't have to put gates up. That was just a suggestion in case they wanted to increase their security. So I just thought it might be good maybe to have a discussion with them. We do want to have a good relationship with the county. We do want to work with them. But of course, we do have codes we have to enforce too, and we have to be consistent. And it just might be more productive maybe to have a discussion with them, but it's up to what you would like.
I think a work session would be good, so we can hear firsthand and what their concerns are, and they can hear ours, because we, we have to follow our ordinances and our procedures. It doesn't matter who it is. We've got to follow those to be consistent with everyone. And it, that's just our responsibility. And I think the works, I'd be in favor for a work session if they want us to come to a county commission meeting or set up a special meeting. I'm interested in proceeding with that.
I'm open.
I'm open too. They, they meet every Monday at nine AM.
Yeah. I, I will ask them if they prefer to do that then or another time, and if they're willing to do it, of course.
Okay.
And also, I sent you all emails about the health fair. I think I heard back from one of you. So the rest of you want to participate, just get with David. I just want to make sure you don't miss out. And then at the last meeting, I reported that we had five hundred and twenty-five surveys. Well, the surveys have closed, and we have seven hundred and ninety, so I am very happy with the response. So I just got the email during the meeting. That's why it's not on the slide. But Mackie emailed me and said seven hundred and ninety responses. So I, I think that's way more than we have with the short survey when we started the strategic plan. So I think that that, that's very good, and it was a lot longer survey. So the fact that we had that many responses, I think that that is something to be celebrated, so.
That's good to find out.
That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
I just want to go back to that health fair, that if, if, something that, that I would do. I don't have to worry about anything showing up on, on a YouTube video or something, do I?
Unless you would like us to video you.
Just kidding.
No, it's, it's all through LeBett, and they, they are graciously doing it for no cost other than what the insurance pays. So they have been a great partner in our health fair.
I will make sure I double-check on that and get back with you and.
Okay, I believe I sent you all the forms that need to be filled out that David needs to get to LeBett.
Okay. All right. With that, Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Hayes?
I have none.
Commissioner Keflis?
I have none.
And I have none also. So Public Concerns, do we have anything tonight? Nothing tonight. All right, that brings us to item nine, Executive Session. It's a consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship. So I make a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorney regarding possible litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception. KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. And the open meeting will resume. How much time are we looking at?
Probably fifteen minutes. Ten?
Ten minutes?
Lacy says ten.
Ten?
Yeah, it'll take you five minutes to get there.
Okay, okay, so for, for ten minutes, so we will resume at eight oh?
Two.
Two?
And then in the, it will be Lacy, David, and I, and then Seth Jones by phone?
By phone.
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Aye, motion carried, thank you. All right, it is eight oh two, and we are back in session. There was no action taken. And we move to item number ten, adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried, thank you.